Good evening, Kalinga. Today, myself and our former mayor, Mayor Nathan Vosberg, are gonna bring you some issues that are before the city right now and we may do this weekly, we may do this monthly, I have no idea, but we're gonna talk about some things that are going on, try and keep everybody informed and uh see where it goes, maybe, maybe we'll do it weekly, who knows? But uh, I'm Adam Maddison, I'm District 1 Councilman. Um, I've been on there for about 3 years, I'm not up for election this time, thank goodness. Uh, with me is former Mayor Vosberg.
How you guys doing tonight? Thank you for all for participating and tuning in. We're gonna be going over some things that people just keep asking and wanting to know the answers to, so we figure why not put a show together and uh, we'll just answer all the questions at once.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, let's start.
Looks like we're gonna start off with uh some statewide ballot measures, um, I know they're statewide, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they don't affect Kalinga, because pretty much every single one of them do. So we'll kinda go over some of the ballot measures. Um, you'll hear kind of what we feel about it and uh hopefully that'll help you make a educated decision when it's time to vote. So let's go ahead and start that up. Um, which one are we gonna start with?
Let's start with Prop 14, which is the No Stem Cell, uh, which is a Stem Cell Research Institute bond, uh, 5.5 million in, I mean, five, is it million or is it billion?
Probably billion.
We're gonna find out, in general obligation bonds.
Alright, so, uh, just uh, to let you know, I'm against like all bonds, all of the time. So if it says bond on election, I'm against it. And I'll tell you why, because you're gonna spend much more on a the interest on the bond than you actually do on the bond itself and you just don't get your money's worth with bonds, so anytime a bond comes up in an election, I'll 99% of the time vote no.
So that's pretty much the same with me, um, you know, I don't have a problem with stem cell research. I know a lot of people probably do and there's some moral grounds on whether or not that's a good idea or not. Um, but the bond issue in itself, to bond up money, uh, just not a good idea. I think, um, I think there could be a lot of other things that we could spend taxpayer dollars on.
Yeah, it's uh bonds are, you pay them off for so long, like 30 years most of the time, it's just not worth it in the end. Uh, next is, looks like Prop 15, Prop 15 takes away some of the protections from the old Prop 13, which was passed in 1978. Has to do with property taxes. So mainly big corporations and even small businesses will have their property taxes increased. Um, in a state that's already one of the highest tax states in the country, I can't imagine that the answer to some of our problems is just that we need more taxes. Um, to me, this is ridiculous and it's only gonna be a start, so they're gonna start here with businesses and then they're slowly gonna start into the property and residential taxes. So you're gonna see, you know, after this election, you're gonna see in a couple of years, they're gonna say, oh, you know what? We need to start taxing residential properties that are worth 3 million dollars or more. And then they're gonna keep moving on, well, we need to start taxing residential properties that are half a million dollars or more. And it's gonna keep continuing, because they never know how to stop when it comes to taxes. So I'm a firm no on 15.
I'm a firm no on 15 as well, and the reason is because prices are gonna skyrocket on everything. As soon as people have to pay more for rent, that, that money will be carried over to the consumers, it'll be carried over to the people that are renting the properties from them. Um, you know, they continue to say that uh, people of color and minorities are gonna be the best to benefit off of this. They're absolutely gonna be the worst to lose on this as well. They're the ones that will be, um, as a whole, uh, out of jobs when people decide, hey, let's close these places down because we can't afford the taxes on them. It's gonna cause prices to go up. This isn't a color thing, this isn't a race thing, I know that if you watch their ads, they're gonna try and make it into one, but it's really not. It's more about that, you know, these businesses are not people.
Right.
You know, so we shouldn't tax them like they are, and that's what they're trying to do.
And, and when a business has to pay more in taxes, who do they pass that cost off to? They always pass it off to the consumer, which is me or you. So even though you hear, oh, the big bad businesses, they're the ones who are gonna be taxed, well, someone's gonna pay for that, it's not gonna be a business, it's gonna be me and you. So we're gonna end up having to pay higher, um, prices for their products. Um, okay, so that's 15, we're both, we're both in agreement so far. Let's move on to 16, that is, this is about race. Uh, this basically brings back affirmative action and various, um, for instance, in public employment, in education, contracting decisions. So basically forever, we've been told, don't ever look at someone and base them off their race. Uh, you know, forget about people's race, we're, we're never supposed to think about it. And now we're supposed to start hiring people based on race. We're supposed to start thinking about it, and we're supposed to start looking at everyone's race. So which one is it? I can never tell. Am I supposed to look at someone and not think of their race, or am I now supposed to? You know, think about, what am I supposed to do? I can never figure out what's coming down from Sacramento. Don't think about them in the race, or do think about them in the race? And then this just makes us think about everyone in their race and it, this causes conflict in society. I'm, I'm absolutely 100% against Prop 16. Um, we need to get rid of the whole race thing.
Yeah, and it's amazing because, um, looking at it, it's very tricky to read this specific one. I went over all these with a fine tooth comb, and this one's specifically tricky. It says, "Proposition, repeal Proposition 209 affirmative action amendment. A yes vote supports this constitutional amendment to repeal Proposition 209, which stated that government and public institutions cannot discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to persons on the basis of race, sex, color, or national origin in public employment." And then, of course, it says, "On a no vote opposes this constitutional amendment, thereby keeping Proposition 209, which stated that government and public institutions cannot discriminate or grant preferential treatment to persons on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in public employment, uh, public or public contracting." So this one is, is, is pretty tricky, but what you just gotta realize is that they want to be able to discriminate. That's actually what they're doing, they want to discriminate. They want to say, we want to hire people based on what color you are. We want to base our stuff on a quota, which is what they're, which is what they're attempting to do. And it should be the best, especially when you're working with tax dollars, the best person for the job. Doesn't matter what race, what sex, what ethnicity, whether you're gay or straight, doesn't matter. If you're the best person for that job, you should get it, and it shouldn't be based on the quota. So I'm a strong no on 16 as well.
It seems like it just erases 50 years of progress. Anyways, so we're both no on that. Let's move on to Prop 17. Prop 17 would restore the right to vote after completion of a prison term. So basically, if you went to prison for some kind of felony, uh, you're not supposed to be able to vote. Um, this proposition would say, after you completed your prison term, you can now vote again. So I'm not necessarily against this, as is. Uh, what I'm against is that Sacramento is doing far more for felons in this last legislative session than they are for the average people like me and you, the law-abiding citizens. I, I can't believe, San Francisco seems to be hyper-focused on everything having to do with felons and giving them everything you can think of. And we can't keep going down this road, we've seen crimes skyrocket over the last several months. Um, we'll talk about some of these propositions later, that just will not help the citizens at all. Um, so in theory, I'm not necessarily against this, depending on certain crimes. I, I think it needs to be narrowed down, like for instance, I don't think a child molester should ever be able to vote again. I don't think someone who murders someone should ever be allowed to vote again. There's many crimes that I am completely against people being allowed to vote after they serve their prison term. So, overall, it's a, it's an idea I can get behind, but it needs a lot more trimming for my liking. So I'm a no on 17.
So on 17, does it talk about people on parole being able to vote too? Is that one of the other things?
So, that's a bill being brought forth, or I don't know if that's even on this one, but it is a bill, it's something they are talking about, yes.
So I had, from what I, uh, can you look at it real quick? Do you see, can you check it out? Because what I had read showed that it also included people on parole, and so for me, how I feel about it is, is that if you're still serving your debt to the public, is it parole?
People on state parole to register.
Okay, so it allows people on state parole to be able to register as well. So that's my thing, is that if you're still serving your debt to society, then no, you shouldn't be allowed to vote. If it's a felony, um, I think that you, I'm totally on board with, as soon as you've served your time, that we should restore a lot of things that were taken away from you. I as well, think there should be a timeline on certain items. Um, as, I think that if you're, you know, for instance, sitting in the mental hospital, uh, you've served your time, but you're still forced to be in institution, uh, that would not be one of those things where I think you should be allowed to vote. I think that you have to be able to walk free and able to be able to vote, that way you can completely participate in society, because if you can't, then you have a skewed view on, on society.
Exactly, and let's not forget, parole is an extension of prison. Parole means you got out before your prison time ended, and you're being watched by the state, pretty much. So, being on parole should not make you eligible to vote, that's just dumb, in my opinion. Alright, we're in agreement there.
Yep.
Okay, Proposition 18, let's talk about 18. 18 changes the age of when you can vote to allow 17-year-olds to vote in primary and special elections if they turn 18 by the general election. I mean, my god, 17-year-old, I really don't want a 17-year-old voting. How much life experience do you really have at 17 to make an educated guess or a decision on several things? I don't want, I don't want a 17-year-old deciding who puts their hand on our nuclear missiles. That's just dumb, in my opinion. Uh, I have a 21-year-old son and I have an 18-year-old son. Uh, I don't know if I want them voting.
I would want my son voting.
Right, so, it just go, I mean, come on, wait your time. Honestly, I, I would be in perfect favor of them raising the age of 21, but that, that's just me. So, I'm a, I'm a no on 18.
For every reason that you just said, I'm also a no on 18, and I do believe that people should be given some life, some, some time to experience life before you vote on how the rest of us are going to live our lives.
Right, okay, so let's move on to 19, this is probably the the, uh, proposition that I could go either way on it, I just really have no real dog in this fight, I don't really care. Um, I'm kind of a, I don't even know how I'm gonna put on 19. 19 changes certain property tax rules, it's very complicated, it's, um, hard to figure out, really. You pretty much need a tax attorney to be able to figure that out. So I may even leave that one blank. Um, I, I don't have a opinion one way or the other.
So on 19, I was on board until I read the last part that said, "Required inherited homes that are not used as principal residences such as second homes and rentals to be reassessed at the market value when transferred." And so if you're gonna be forced to transfer, which I don't you know, with the, the problem with all these is, is that what the intent and what actually happens are usually two different things. And so, um, you know, I don't see that there should be a, a need for a special thing to control this.
Yeah, sorry, my big dog's coming in here.
He wants to be on camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I tend to say no on, on 19 as well. Um, but, you know, it, it doesn't sound bad, let's put it that way, it doesn't sound bad, it sounds good. But I could just see what they could do with it, and I could see that if they said, hey, you have to force people to transfer their properties out of areas of wildfires, and then they're forcing to, and getting a reassessment on property in an area that would have a higher value, that that wouldn't be beneficial to them. And so, I'm gonna stand on a no on 19, but uh, um, you know, of course, we're just talking here. You guys can, you know, absolutely, uh, 100% check everything that we're saying out online and look for yourselves.
Right, so Prop 20. Uh, Prop 20 is going to restrict parole for certain offenses. Um, hold on, take over for me, I gotta.
Okay, so Prop 20 is a criminal sentencing, parole, and DNA collection initiative. And a yes vote supports this initiative to add crimes to the list of violent felonies for which early parolee is restricted. Recognize certain types of theft and fraud crimes as wobblers, uh, chargeable as misdemeanors or felonies, and require DNA collection for certain misdemeanors. Um, a no vote opposes this initiative to add crimes to the list of violent felonies for which early parole is restricted, and re-categorize certain types of theft and fraud crimes as wobblers. Um, so for me, I'm a strong vote yes on this. I'm not a huge fan of being forced to give up DNA, I'll tell you that. Um, but I'm definitely in favor, uh, you know, what's happened in Prop 47, 57, and AB 109 has been a horrible thing. And it's basically allowed people to get away with crimes and re-offend, and put them into a revolving door. And now it's, it's so bad to where a lot of these people aren't even, uh, they aren't even being arrested. Because the police agencies, especially the smaller ones, they realize that, hey, there's no point. Like, why arrest them? We're just gonna spend our resources sending them, uh, you know, to, like, for instance, in Kalinga, we have to send them all the way to Fresno, that takes an officer's time. Um, if they're just gonna be let out, like, what's the point? And so this is something that tries to strengthen, uh, and close some of those loopholes. So I'm a definite yes on 20.
Right, so I'm a yes on 20 as well, this is a direct repudiation of Props 47 and 57. Prop 47, 57 lets so many crimes be reclassified to something less and minor. Um, a lot of the homelessness, a lot of the increased crime has a lot to do with the passage of Prop 47 and 57. So this helps contain some of that, it helps bring in uh, more penalties for people who commit some crimes. Um, it, it's really going to help bring crime down if we well, when we keep going in this, if we keep voting, uh, this way. So, uh, yes on 20, it's definitely gonna help with some of the crime issue, not all of it, but it'll help a little bit. Okay, moving on, 21. 21, do you have it?
Yeah, 21's rent control.
Oh, valid.
This is to allow local governments to enact rent control on housing that was first occupied 15 years ago, with an exception of a landlord who owns more than 2 homes with distinct titles or subdivided interests. What do you think about that?
Uh, I'm definitely, um, against Prop 21. We can look to other places who have instituted rent control, and we can see that it has never worked. And it actually will do have the opposite effect of what they are trying to accomplish. I think this is part of a bigger agenda, but I'm definitely against this. It, uh, it, it doesn't work, it never has worked. And why continue down a path of, uh, failure? So I'm against 21.
So amazingly enough, I'm learning about rent control in my Econ Maker and Economics class, and they're actually using it as a, as an idea for what not to do, saying that it has the exact opposite effects. Uh, by, by putting rent control in, you're basically putting a, a price ceiling in that says that prices can't go over a certain amount, and what that does is it takes away incentive for the supply.
Right.
Which why would people continue to, to, you know, put supply into houses, into the housing market? And when you take away that supply, we have an, we have an encouraging demand, because we have people being born every year. And we also have people being, uh, coming in from all over the place, right? And so we have an increasing demand with a lowering supply, which is gonna create a shortage. And, uh, they know this, that's the amazing thing, is they know this, it's almost like they want to have these shortages, and they're doing the same thing with the water. They're doing the same thing with everything, so I'm definitely a strong, uh, no on 21.
Right, so I mean, if you're, if you're a builder of, of houses or apartments or whatever, what is your incentive to build if you can't make a profit on what you're building? You're gonna invest a whole lot of money into these properties and then have the government tell you, oh, but you can only charge this amount. So I think this is just ridiculous. Okay, on to Prop 22. Uh, if you remember, Prop 20, there was a bill passed last year, I think it was AB 5?
AB 5.
Um, that basically made Lyft and, um, uh, Lyft and Uber drivers, uh, app-based drivers, pretty much, it made them you couldn't, you couldn't be a con, what do they call it, contracted?
You can't be self-employed.
Yeah, you'd have to be employed, it just creates a whole lot of problems. So basically, California, the state government has legislated Uber and Lyft out of existence in California. Luckily, a judge put a halt to it, so right now they are still operating. But if this, um, passes, I'm sorry, if this fails to pass, then there will be no Uber and Lyft in California anymore, or, or Instacart, or any of, any of that stuff. So, this again is another repudiation by the voters of Sacramento. Uh, how ridiculous, how ridiculous, to get, to wanna work a little, a little bit on the side, be a Uber driver or a Lyft driver, and the government coming in and once again, getting in your life and telling you, you shouldn't be able to do that unless all these other ridiculous criteria is met. So if, if we vote no on 22, voting no is pretty much going to get rid of Lyft and Uber and Instacart and all that within the state of California, they, they will no longer exist.
So you're voting yes?
I'm voting yes on 22.
So I'm definitely voting yes on 22, and this is another example of a, a price control put in by a government that defies free market systems. This one is an example of a price floor. And what this does is guarantees that you have to pay a certain price in order to take a ride, which is also in, is going to cause shortages and dead weight loss. It's gonna cause problems with the fact that, uh, these companies were operating under margins that were, uh, good for the, the drivers, and they were good for them. And so as soon as you start taking away those margins, it's not gonna be good for anyone. And they're not gonna exist, and the reason they existed in the first place is because taxis were so expensive, and the taxi drivers weren't making what they wanted, and so there was another solution that came up, and so, you know, this has been a great thing, and this is, you know, to me, Prop 22 doesn't go far enough. It should completely repeal AB 5.
Totally.
To, in general, like, take, what they've done was, they carved out little sections. First they said, oh, there, there will be no more, uh, um, basically self-employed type of thing, where, where uh, where you can work for somebody else and they can pay you a, as your own person. So, then they started carving, people started getting mad, and so they started carving little areas out. And they started saying, oh, well, newspapers, you can still pay people to write individual columns for you. And, you know, individual places are allowed to do individual things, but this is, it, they should not be allowed they shouldn't be allowed to dictate that.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be allowed to dictate that, it should be a free market system, so I'm definitely against 22. I mean, I'm, yeah, see, this is one of those tricky ones, I'm definitely for 22.
Yes on 22.
Yes on 22, that's what I would do. Of course, look up everything and decide for yourself.
Right, so moving on to Prop 23, Prop 23, uh, and puts in more government regulation for things that government doesn't need to be involved in, and that has to do with kidney dialysis clinics. Uh, there's gonna be state requirements, which is gonna make dialysis go up in cost. Um, anytime, anytime the state's gonna put on more regulations on something, it's definitely uh, something we wanna stay away from. Regulations in the state are already out of control, this isn't gonna help anybody out at all. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm a no on 23.
I'm also a no on 23, it's gonna require onsite physicians while patients are being treated, and, uh, you know, they, they've, this is another cost factor, where that, that physician's, you know, gonna have to get paid. And I don't know very many physicians that are going to want to just stand by and get paid at a dialysis center. And so it's probably gonna be a lot of these, uh, roaming physicians. And insurances probably won't cover it, that'll probably be another thing that's, that is jammed up in here. You know, anytime you go somewhere where they have a provider that comes in, that's not your normal provider, the insurance agencies find a way to charge you for it, I could see that happening in this. Um, but yeah, no, I'm a solid, um, no on 23 as well.
Okay, Prop 24, amends consumer privacy laws. Um, I don't really have much to say about this one, I don't really know a whole lot about it, do you know anything about it?
So I'll read what it says, it says, "A yes vote supports this ballot initiative to expand the state's consumer data privacy laws, including provisions to allow consumers to direct businesses to not share their personal information, remove the time period in which businesses can fix violations before being penalized, and create the Privacy Protection Agency to enforce the state's consumer data privacy laws." So the reason I have a problem with this is it's gonna create yet another state agency, totally against that. Um, I, I don't think that, uh, taking away time to fix violations is a good idea either. Um, you know, in this day and age, we should all realize and know that our data is, we are the product.
Right.
Right? We are the product, you're getting something for free. So rather than do this, I would say, let's train, uh, people on how to guard their privacy and train them on how to realize this. Uh, I don't think that businesses are going to, uh, one, I think this will be used as a weapon. That's what I do, I think that this will be used as a weapon.
And like Ronald Reagan said, the last thing you ever wanna hear is, hi, I'm from the government, I'm here to help.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on to something that's near and dear to my heart, and that is Prop 25. Prop 25 will get rid of the bail system in California. Um, I'm a bounty hunter, as most of you know. Uh, this will put me out of writ, out of a job, and it will also get rid of 20,000 jobs in California. Uh, this idea of going to a public safety and flight risk system, computer system, to determine who stays in jail and who doesn't is absolutely absurd. Uh, the California Constitution and the federal constitution gives us a right to bail, uh, this does not. As we've seen over the last, what, since April? When we've gone to zero bail, which this basically is, uh, when we've gone to zero bail, crime has increased 129% in Fresno County. We've seen shootings in Kalinga go up dramatically over that time. We've even had a murder, we've had, uh, what was the kid, 15 or 17-year-old kid shot? It's out of control, and zero bail does not help. Zero bail will hurt you, it doesn't matter what kind of pink little bow they put on this thing, it's awful. You will be a victim of crime for this, crime will continue to go up. We've seen shootings rise 90% in Fresno, in Fresno. Stabbings have gone up 70%, gang violence has gone up just incredibly over this. Do not, vote no on 25, I'm telling you. Your, 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 your property value is gonna go way down with the crime that's coming, the crime that's already came. Uh, look at what's going on around us, it's absolutely insane that we are going in this direction. Stop the madness, stop the crime madness, vote no on 25, this is incredible, that this is even an issue these days.
So I was reading about, uh, on one of the, you know, I have most of the sheriff's agencies liked, and it's usually not their agency, it's usually their, um, their union. And one of the unions posted a couple days ago that someone had been let out. Uh, he went, he, he was arrested on a crime, he was let out on no bail, and he went and murdered that person.
Right.
Right, stuff like this happens, stuff that they should have been kept for. Um, it's ridiculous, and it's, you can just throw all crime that, that's, that's, they look at as small, like property crime, that's all off the window. They'll just continue to offend.
You go in, yeah, so you can have someone who breaks into your house or steals your car, they will get arrested, be out 3 hours later stealing another car. Get arrested, come right back out of jail, it just, it's an endless cycle, people, there's no there's no reason for them to not commit the crimes they're committing, because there's no, there's no, um, there's no punishment anymore, it's, it's, the crime here is out of control, I mean, all of you have seen it, do you want it to continue or do you want it to stop? It just, it needs to stop.
Pretty much everywhere that's, has enabled this has wished they wouldn't.
Yeah.
Right, they all talk about it's such a great idea, and then all of a sudden, oop, yeah, well, sorry, we messed up, we shouldn't have done that.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I'm definitely, um, you know, 25 would probably be the number one thing that I would actually encourage people to really look into and, and look at the crime statistics, and, uh, this is something you have a conflict of interest on.
Yeah, I admit that one.
Since people are looking at conflict of interest with you.
I admit that one.
Yeah, no, and, and, please, please, think about your kids, think about, uh, your own livelihoods when you're looking at Prop 25. That's, uh, that's absolutely the worst, and guess what? They did it without a vote. They did it without a vote from the public, they decided, their supermajority decided what to do. And they made that up, and, and they were going full-fledged for it, and with COVID, they've, they've enacted it even into a very further, uh, mode.
It, it's out of control, yeah, it's ridiculous, please vote no on 25. Okay, let's move on to some issues in Kalinga, I'm just gonna cover these ones real quick. City clerk, okay, we don't have a city clerk running for election, we haven't had a city clerk running for election in years. Um, I would hope that you all vote to, uh, get rid of the city clerk position, I shouldn't say that. I would hope that you would say that city clerk position should be appointed, uh, by the council. Uh, it makes it easy, there's really, all they do is take minutes, basically. Shannon does a lot more, but, when she's the city clerk, she just takes minutes.
Well, I think Wanda's watching, she may, she may disagree with us on, on this.
Sorry, Wanda, love you.
This, this may be something we disagree about, um, I do believe, I don't think that, uh, I, the reason that I wouldn't put this on to Shannon at the, is because she's so, she's already so overloaded at the city, um, to do this. Um, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with appointing someone, though. I think that if she could get some help, uh, but I think what's gonna end up happening is, is that we're gonna hear that, that Shannon's overloaded, we're gonna hear that, that Sean's overloaded, we're gonna hear that, that the city, and you know what? That they are. I mean, they, they really are, they're already overloaded, so I don't know what I, I'm gonna put on that. Um, I, I have no idea, I, I really, I really put a lot of thought into it, and I do think you guys should be able to appoint, but I, I really would hope that it would be not making someone at the city work harder. I know Shannon has so many different jobs, so hopefully she can figure out how to it would be not making someone at the city work harder. I know Shannon has so many different jobs, so hopefully you figure out how to do that at the same time.
And since Nathan doesn't know how to vote on that, just listen to me. Okay, let's go on to City Treasure. City Treasure is a one person running, that's Dawn Kahakina, so she's pretty much gonna win by default. Okay, so that covers our ballot. We won't get into the other stuff in the ballot.
All right, and then hold on, I was gonna, so we're adding little um kinda like little advertisements for little Kalinga businesses into here. And and guess what? They haven't asked us to. We're just doing it. We're doing it anyways because we like them. And so the first thing we wanted to talk about was something that went on today, the Austin French Rally. Then you actually did it.
I did, I went there. Uh it was quite well. It was well-attended as well. Uh several churches in town participated. And there must have been close to two hundred people there. Um Austin French did a phenomenal job of singing and playing guitar, and so did his partner up there. Uh it was a great time. Uh it was nice to get out. Everyone was spaced. Uh just had a great time. It was a great family time. I'm so glad we did something like that. I hope we continue to do that in the future.
All right, so um moving on, um next thing we're gonna talk about is the Cannabis Lounge. And uh um Adam had a chance to, Councilman Atkinson, had a chance to vote on on this Cannabis Lounge. Um what did you think and and what does the Cannabis Lounge mean to you and and?
So the the Cannabis Lounge is gonna be coming to Kalinga. It's basically gonna be like an alcoholic bar, an alcohol bar for cannabis. Um this is gonna be everywhere in about five years, I would say. Once again, Kalinga's kind of leading the way with this. It's something that's, it's gonna be everywhere. We might as well um bring it in and make our own rules, be able to uh regulate it in in the way that works best for us. It's also gonna bring in much-needed revenue to the city of Kalinga. Uh we don't know exactly how bad COVID's gonna hurt us right now. So that's why we're trying to get as many businesses in as possible, businesses that wanna come here. Uh this consumption lounge is gonna be one of them. I think it could bring a lot of people from out of town. Um there's gonna be ban uh live bands during certain nights. There's also gonna be a uh an alcohol bar on another side of it, so in my opinion, it, this isn't, in five years from now, this is gonna be thought of no different than say, the pit stop, or um when we had Whiskey Row, or something like that. This is gonna be everywhere in about five to ten years. So um I voted in favor of it. Uh I'm still in favor of it. I think it's gonna bring in revenue. I think it's gonna help us with uh our costs with our police department, our fire department, a lot of the other budgetary issues we're having right now. Um I think it's a win for Kalinga. We're gonna be one of the first ones in the valley to have it. And you're gonna see a lot of other cities in the valley follow what we do. So that is why I was for it. That's why I'm still for it, and that's why I'm gonna be, continue to be for it.
So do you think that crime will increase in Kalinga because of it?
It has never once increased. We have not had any increase in crime because of dispensary. Um when you look at these studies done statewide, uh when you have issues uh with the dispensary, you never see an increase in crime wherever they go in. Um in fact, you actually see the opposite, and you actually see a rise in property value. Uh not saying that there's a direct correlation, it just happens to be that way so far. Um but we're definitely not gonna see an increase in crime because of a consumption lounge or because of a dispensary. In fact, the dispensary, I think, had one call to the police, and it didn't, it wasn't even at the dispensaries across the street at the park.
Yeah, so when I was on council, I was adamant about finding out what those crime details were. And uh um Chief Salvador at the time had told me that they had had a handful of issues throughout all of the cannabis um industry that the police were uh had to be called for, and that most of them were things of uh activity like uh someone had their car broken into. Not at the dispensary, but at one of the job sites, you know, and things of that nature. But there wasn't any violent crime, and there wasn't um anything uh like that. I would like to just chime in and say that I know people are still against cannabis, and that's one hundred percent uh their right. And um you know, I'm, I like when people have morals and stand behind them. I think that's really something that we need more of in this nation. Um but I want people to know that um unless there would have been other ideas enacted in this town, um we would have been far in debt um if it wasn't for cannabis. Literally, we, I I know I keep hearing people saying, well, you know, I don't want our town to be, you know, a cannabis town. Um well, unfortunately, I would say bring up some ideas. Bring some ideas to the table and then work on them and try and get them brought in so that, so that we don't constantly just blame cannabis. We constant, we would go out and say, okay, well, what other ideas are there, and what what other have have people done? Um I'm not gonna go into the exact details. We'll do it another time of all the income that we've brought in. But, you know, it it's an enormous amount of income, uh and we were really, the city was in deep debt. And it kept bleeding, and it would constantly bleed every single year, you know, so uh triaging that with cannabis money um and continuing to do that, because that cannabis money, what what did I hear? Was I correct in hearing that uh High Times was saying they were gonna drop a check for ninety thousand? And if that was a quarterly check, right, take that times four, that's that's quite a good chunk of change for just one um for for just one place. And that's that's not including all the rest of different things, and that, a lot of that money goes to fund your police, your fire. Um you know, that's almost what, seventy or eighty percent of the budget?
Yeah, so in between seventy, eighty percent of the budget is taken up by police and fire. And being a town this small, having both police and a fire is unheard of. We're, you're not gonna find another town of our size that has both police and fire. And policemen don't work for free, nor should they. Firemen don't work for free either, nor should they. So we have to pay for these things, and we have to find ways to pay for a police and fire department. Um because it's it's very expensive, and honestly, they do a hell of a job, too.
Well, and being so far out, we're what, seventy, seventy miles out, so they have any, they have a harder job because they don't have assistance from a lot of other places to come out and aid them. And then, you know, costs go up. Cost of living increase, you know, they hadn't had raises.
In twelve years.
Right, and so within the last two or three years, they've all gotten raises. Maybe not what they want, but the council has worked on trying to get everyone uh raises at the city because they were extremely underpaid. And so that that's not gonna stop. That'll continue, and we have to continue to figure out how to pay for it. So my thing is, is that, hey, if you guys have ideas, either run for council and bring those ideas and push them forward, or contact your council person, attend a city council meeting, bring the people to the table, and bring those ideas, you know, I I don't think anyone wants to see a town be locked into one specific thing.
I mean, yeah, exactly. You don't see businesses knocking down the door of Kalinga to come in. But um Walmart's not coming, okay? Not until we grow our population by tens of thousands. Um they're just not gonna come. Uh a lot of these other big box stores aren't gonna come either. So we have to find ways to bring in revenue to the city. We have to have stability in our budget, and we have to be able to pay for the things that we have without going into debt. So the way that we have found that has been working for us over the last several years is is to bring in some of the cannabis businesses. They they wanna come here, where a lot of other businesses don't.
So that brings us up to our uh city council meeting.
Oh yeah, so our city council meeting is gonna be on Thursday, this Thursday, the uh, what is that, the fifteenth or sixteenth? Uh it'll be at six PM. You'll be able to follow us on Zoom. Or actually, yeah, on Zoom. Um we'll post a link to where you can watch. Uh nothing huge at this next council meeting that I remember. Um but always stay informed and always pay attention.
All right, so we're gonna move on to, amazingly enough, uh conflict of interest with with uh with uh Councilman Atkinson and cannabis, since we just talked all about cannabis. And you you admittedly voted on that. I I have some questions for you. I just wanna outright ask, is there a conflict of interest in you voting with the cannabis industry?
Absolutely no conflict of interest in me voting for the cannabis industry. Uh I I do have a little side thing that I do called Rogation. It, I I, there's some CBD in my um bath bombs. I make bath bombs, lotion, soaps, uh deodorant, everything you think of. There's some CBD in it. Now, the CBD comes from hemp plants, doesn't come from anywhere in Kalinga. It's not grown in Kalinga. In fact, there are no hemp plant, industrial hemp plants in Kalinga. So people who say that there's a conflict of interest just have no clue what they're talking about. It's absolutely absurd. It's an abuse of power. We all know who I'm talking about. Uh it's just absolutely ridiculous. Why would there be any, it's not even a real business, I mean.
Okay, so here, I I did, I I got some questions for you then. Okay, so um one, did the attorney ever tell you guys uh if this was currently a conflict of interest? Did you guys reach out to the city attorney? Because it amazes me that the city attorney or the city manager wouldn't have jumped in and uh been like, hey, you know, this is a conflict that you can't vote.
So we had a councilwoman who everyone knows doesn't like me and wants to abuse her power and do everything she can to try and bring me down, put this on the agenda, which means the city attorney had to analyze it and come up with an his legal opinion on it, which costs you, the taxpayers, money. Absolutely absurd. And the city attorney gave his his opinion, and that was that there was no conflict of interest. And one, one real quick, Rachel Ross, if you're still listening, I believe the ballot box for the city is outside the library.
It is, it's outside the library. And it it has cameras on it, too, just for everyone knows, because people that come uh to the library ask me if it's safe, and I tell them, oh, we got cameras right on the, right on the ballot boxes, so.
Cool. Very good.
So um personally, I think this was a a personal attack against you. I don't see that there was any conflict of interest. If there was, and if there would be in the future, the FPPC would be the ones to investigate you, and that would be the Fair Political Practices Commission that was put together just for specific things uh like this. And uh for those that don't know, all council members are required to attend conflict of interest training. Did you attend conflict of interest training?
I certainly did.
How many times have you attended it? Once, twice?
I don't even know. I haven't done so many trainings in this. Yeah, several times.
So from what I've remembered, and from what I've researched from the FPPC, conflicts of interest has to do with monetary monetary benefits such as money, uh gifts, potential profits, or income that would stem from a particular contract or an ordinance being voted on. So I'm gonna ask you a couple questions, and if you could just say like yes or no. Um have you received any gifts from the contract holder?
Negative, no.
Have you received any income or campaign contributions from them?
No, I don't take campaign contributions.
Do you own property within five hundred feet of the contract holder's property that they're gonna put in the Cannabis Lounge?
I do not.
Do you currently do business with the contract holder?
I do not.
Do you ex expect an increase in income from the products that you sell because of this contract? Are you listed on the contract as a partner or any way, shape, and form with this business?
Absolutely not.
So my question is, I wonder how much the city is going to have to pay for this, because those are the questions that the FPPC asks people. And um these are widely available, and I understand why the city attorney can't just give an opinion and say yes or no. It's because if he does and he's wrong, then he could get sued, right? So he went into time to do this because this was something a council member uh put forth. And and I don't think that person had any, didn't think, I I don't think they that they thought you had a conflict of interest. But just curious, how much do you think this is gonna cost, or do you know?
I don't know. How much do I think it'll cost? Uh judging by time and effort put into it, uh I would say it's gonna be over a thousand dollars, but we'll see. We'll see. I don't, I don't really know. Um and it's really terrible when you have someone who's making policy on these kinds of things, they don't even know what they're making policy on. They have no clue. Moving on.
Moving on, okay, so I would like to give a little bit of shout out to the Kalinga press and to Mary Jones.
Mary Jones.
Mary Jones. I I don't think everyone realizes, you know, I know that that we all agree and we all disagree with lots of things that everyone does, including Mary Jones. But I don't think there's a lot of people that put as much time and effort into this community uh doing things for the betterment of the community and not getting paid for it than Mary Jones does. And I think she does a great job on the Kalinga press. I know that she doesn't make hardly, if she makes anything, it may cover only a minimal amount of expenses. And so I would recommend that people sign up for the Kalinga press. Uh the information that she gives, I be, I have seen some of the most unbiased reporting uh from anyone. It's not like the Fresno Bee, it's not like your Sacramento Bee. This is gonna be based around local stuff. She does put in some things that have to do with nationwide politics, uh sometimes if it affects Kalinga. Um and like anybody, you know, she has opinion columns, and she definitely has her opinions, but I would, I'd just like to give a shout out to her and say, anyone who doesn't have it, um get the Kalinga press. It's a great thing.
She does a good job. She uh she takes a lot of heat for that, especially from another Kalinga page that has about three followers. So don't pay attention to what you hear on that thing. It's just a bunch of garbage. Mary Jones is the real deal. Good job, Mary.
All right, so we're gonna move on to uh you, you have an item that's on, you do have one item that's on on the discussion for council, and it is the modernization of Veterans Park.
So this is something I've been working on for a long time. I've always had a uh an idea that I wanted to do this. Uh I definitely want it to be after the K nine. We were pretty suc- successful getting the K nine program here, all on private donations. Well, the same thing I wanna do with the Veterans Park. I think our Veterans Park is a little shabby, a little rundown, doesn't quite give the it's missing something for our veterans. A lot of, we've had people from Kalinga who died in wars, and uh I think we should give them something a little more than what we have right now. So uh eventually, uh it's very, it's very much so in the beginning stages, is we're gonna use private donations to try and pay for more, some amount of a modernization of Veterans Park. We're also gonna be another thing I'm gonna be having before the council, most likely I'm gonna have to wait on all this stuff till January till we don't need to talk about why January, but I'll probably be waiting till January. But there's gonna be a brick program where you can get your name on a brick or your business name on a brick, and we're gonna sell that for a cer- certain amount of money, and the profit from that is gonna go into the Veterans Park. So it's still stuff we're working on. Um it's going to, thanks, Melanie, it's going to come up in the next few months, so we'll see where it goes. Uh I hope to make Veterans Park a much better, better-looking place, uh something that Avinor and Huron are gonna wanna come to on Veterans Day and Memorial Day and things like that.
Do you, do you think that you guys will be able to use any Prop sixty-eight funds? Is that still available?
Something that we will be looking into. I don't have an answer to that for sure, but um it could be something we we would be able to use, although we have a lot of things we need to use that money for, too, so.
So are you gonna be um, or you guys have the grant writers, right?
Right, we have Blaze and Associates as our grant writers, so.
We should give them a shout out.
They're down south. They're our um grant writers. Uh that was something we never had before. We recently got them in the last year. I think they're gonna be a a tremendous asset to our community, and one of the ways that we're able to pay for grant writers, which gets us a lot of money in grants, one way that we're able to pay for them is the revenue we bring in from cannabis companies, and including our lobbyists, too, which is uh what are they called? I can't remember, but um we're hoping to get a lot of money coming into Kalinga from grants and things like that. So Blaze and Associates, you guys are kicking butt out there.
And just so you guys know, I um, you know, I'm a huge uh proponent of using um uh lobbyists and grant writers. Um they, the the grant writer specifically knows where all the grants are, and he, they also know if you're eligible for them, and then when it comes around, uh they ship those out to all the different cities. And usually with the grant writer, there's not very, there's not a bias uh from which cities get to get these grant, be these grants. Uh that may change with lobbyists. Lobbyists are political. Finding a lobbyist that is uh good and at the same time is gonna keep you at the forefront usually means that they aren't lobbying for your sister communities uh or around you. And so um I, but both of them bring in millions, millions in 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 revenue. Uh well, it's not actually revenue, it's it's grants. And so, but the amount of money that you guys spend on them is very small compared to what they bring in.
For sure. I mean, you you look around and you see these other cities getting all kinds of grant money for whatever road, name it. Getting grant money for all kinds of stuff, and we've been missing out, in my opinion. We've been missing out on a lot of that over the years, so we brought these grant writers in and hopefully we're gonna see them put to good use here, especially when this COVID stuff ends. Where we at? Okay.
Oh no, we're at this. We're at uh, we're at this one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So uh let's talk about another Kalinga business, one that we all love and we all want to stay, and that's uh Real Time. Scott does a great job over there at the movie theater. Uh he's having a hard time right now because there's nothing showing really right now. Uh not many people are showing up. Uh we all want to support our movie theater. We all want to have that. Everyone always wants to complain about nothing to do. Well, let's go out and support some of the businesses that do give us something to do. And and Kalinga Real Time, Kalinga Movie Theater is one of those. Scott does an awesome job over there. He's keeping everybody safe by allowing only a certain amount of people into the theater, having certain rows roped off. Um if you really wanna look at how movie theaters should open across the state, uh go to, go to Real Time here in Kalinga. Or if you don't, you don't even need to go to a movie. Go there and buy popcorn, do something. Put your money where your mouth is. You want these piece, places to stay, go show them you want them to stay by going over there, getting some popcorn, getting soda, getting candy, whatever you need to do, just go out, go out there and support them.
You know, uh Scott has donated his time and his facilities for pretty much everyone that's asked. I think that he is one of the best um places in town. Regal Theaters just announced that they're shutting everything down. And so in the in the midst of all these places shutting down because there's lack of movies because of the COVID issues, uh uh Real Time has uh managed to to keep the doors open, and let me tell you, we do not wanna lose them. If we lose them, we will have a darned a time getting any kind of movie theater back. Our population uh, you know, is is an issue for that. Um even Fresno doesn't have too many movie theaters, and so the fact that we have one, uh they're kinda like a a graceful place in Kalinga, and so please support Scott. Uh they're kinda like a a graceful place in Kalanga and so please support Scott, please support Real Time.
You don't even need to go to a movie, just go there and buy popcorn or something, please people, okay.
So moving on, we have another one, this is gonna be an interesting one, we'll see if we agree on this. The water and sewer rate increases.
Boy, if there's anything that Kalanga people have loved me more, it is increasing the rates for sewer and water. I would never have done a rate increase if I didn't think it was necessary. Uh it was absolutely unnecessary, we're not gonna increase gas right now, in fact, when we look over the years at our gas. Kling is one of the only cities who buys gas on bulk, we're kind of our own distributor, I guess, uh we've had two decreases. In two thousand nine and two thousand eleven at with our gas rates. Unfortunately, now we um have to increase our sewer rates, uh sewer has not increased since July of two thousand five. So we're talking, you ever had a rate increase in sewer for fifteen years, just about, so um. Operating costs have gone up since then, we've had employees get raises since then, but most of all, our sewer is. Rundown, it needs a lot of improvements and I've been preaching this since pretty much day one or next to it. Not too long after it that we have a lot of issues with our wastewater treatment plant, uh they need to be addressed. Uh same with our water plant, um I heard a, I heard a great saying one time and that is your. City revenue begins and ends with your water and wastewater treatment plants. If you cannot distribute water to the people of your community or you cannot take in their waste. Then you're not gonna get people to come in, you're not gonna get businesses to come in, so you your revenue, your economy. Begins and ends with your sewer and your water, um our last water increase was uh July two thousand fifteen, so it's been a while. Since we've had an increase in water, nobody likes to increase rates, I don't, I don't wanna increase rates. Um but it's something that has to be done because uh we have a lot of issues with our water and sewer. I I know Nate's about to get on me for something right now, but we're gonna be uh, the average is gonna be for for sewer. It's gonna be about six dollars a month for the average consumer and for water, it's gonna be um seven dollars a month the first year. Then additional four dollars a month after that first year, then another additional four dollars after that. I know, don't kill me, I I'm, we're trying to keep everything running here, sorry. Anyways, um the increase for water is gonna take three years, but um, so the first year, your your average. Increase in your uh bill is going to be in the neighborhood of thirteen dollars.
So, when I first um joined council a long time ago, I was totally against, you know, the even the idea of increases. Um especially being a a a Republican, I think you'd say, right?
That's good.
Looked at it as a tax, it it's not a tax though, it's the cost of doing business and um. Unfortunately, uh you're gonna see more of these. You're gonna see more of these, all around the the, every time, you remember we were talking about those price floors that you put in? Yeah, um with rent control, well, those have to do with taxes and all those little price things that they put in, those have real consequences on cities. And so every time that they're talking out about a tax and they're saying it won't hurt you, they're wrong, then taxes have increases on services. All around that our city uses and so when our city has to pay more for those same services and we may have to pay our workers more. Because the cost of living increases because their their cost of living goes up, then unfortunately that that hits home with all of us. And so, from what I understand, the SCADA system, which is kinda the brains of the operation. That needs to be replaced or or fixed, right? And let me tell you, that is a huge deal because that can monitor water flow.
Anywhere.
Anyway, and it it's a huge deal that we make sure that we're on top of that because um we don't wanna lose water. We were having water leakage um in one of the years that I was talking on council and the leakage was an enormous amount. And especially when you're talking about droughts, uh you know, when we have droughts and we're talking about leakage. Um that lowers the what, the amount of usable city water that the city has. To be able to use and then you have your distribution system where, you know, the individual pipes that lead to people's houses. A lot of that stuff needs to be replaced, a lot of it needs to be constantly maintenance and then you have your tanks. Which I've seen some of the inside of these tanks.
Tanks, these tanks are near fifty years old and had a lifespan of like, they're only supposed to last thirty years or something like that. So we have, in all, we have twelve million dollars of improvements that are needed at the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant.
How much?
Twelve million dollars, so most likely we're gonna have to take out bonds in order to. Um make some of the improvements that we need in order to keep these things running. They've been neglected for years, you, I would even say decades and uh it needs to be addressed. Um if we want to continue to grow as a city, if we wanna be able to attract businesses. Unfortunately, this is one of the things that we need to do, I I hate it, I can't stand it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I have to be the one to do it, it's gonna make me unpopular. But it's something that needs to be done, but if I can go back to how we get our natural gas. Um we get it through the city, right? So you you pay for your gas through the city because the city gets it out of bulk cost, well, if we use PG and E. We would pay um a hundred and seven dollars more, so we actually get our gas twenty eight percent cheaper than if we use PG and E. So we're taking a lot of that savings, still, we're still saving. Even with our increased rates in sewer and water, we're still saving if we compare to having PG and E for our gas distributor. If that makes sense.
And I'm sure you guys are wondering, well, if you're saving on one side, why can't you apply that to the other side? Well, that's because the you, those are two different type of things and you can't do that. It it's kinda the difference in between municipal funds and general funds, those funds are separate and so the rate payers, there's actually rate payer groups out there that are. Uh protectors and and the city would get sued if they did things like that and so, you know, um these municipal funds are separated out, they keep everything separate. Uh the things that we that we have uh, um the things that the city in the past has had uh a cost savings on. They have kept that cost savings until they need to spend it on something and there's like a threshold. It's a very small threshold too that you can't pass and so, um unfortunately, you know, I'm I'm. I did not send the letter back saying I didn't want the rate increase because I knew that it's it's gonna be a basic requirement for the city's growth in the future, so. I'm supporting this.
A lot of you see that water tank out there on Derek, it's a big one, uh where, kinda when you're going to the oil fields, I guess. Just that tank alone is gonna cost two point six million dollars in repairs, uh this stuff is not cheap. This stuff is not cheap, unfortunately, so we have about seven million dollars in repairs for our water, water. Plant and about five million, somewhere in that neighborhood, five, five million for our um wastewater treatment plant. So, oh, let's talk about Cannabis Night, Cannabis Night's coming up, uh the Chamber of Commerce will be putting that on, it's gonna be through Zoom, I believe it's gonna be on October. Fifteenth at six P M, uh keep watching out for the details on that, you're gonna see. Uh hopefully, five candidates will be there, I'm not exactly sure, I haven't asked them all, but I would imagine all five would attend and be part of that. Uh it's gonna be Thursday at six P M, uh hopefully y'all will watch that, make an educated decision on. Who's gonna be on council, I think this is a very important election, especially for the city, um so Thursday, six P M, watch it. Okay, so, oh, let's talk about, let's talk about some of my candidates interviews, uh some of you may have seen it, I've been interviewing the different candidates, I've done two so far, I still have two more to go. One has not accepted the invitation and that's fine, um what have you thought so far? Have you been able to listen at all?
I have, um I have listened, um I made a point to because I think it's important to to know what people stand for and. Um I've got to know, you know, just by listening, you can get to know them a little bit better. And so if people haven't listened, I suggest go back, they're in the Kalanga Citizens, you can search for live videos and you can find it there, um. But one of the things that I that I liked was um, I know Andrea, uh running for what, District Two, is it? That she's been taking a lot of heat on the B L M and defunding the police, uh people have been pushing those. Uh that onto her, those type of ideals, um saying that she, that she uh has supported those um ideals and she completely. Uh used your guys' time to to very specifically uh state her support. Uh and why she specifically supports an idea of B L M, but that she does not support defunding the police at all. And so that was one of the good takeaways that I took away from that interview, what did you think about her interview?
I think it went well, uh for someone, it's not easy to do these kinds of interviews, uh I gave everyone the questions beforehand, I think I had a list of nine questions, ten questions. Each one of them were, is gonna be asked about it, so i- it's hard for someone to come on here and. Especially when you don't have any experience on council and you don't know exactly how it works, you have an idea in your mind how it works, but it doesn't quite. When you get there, it does not work the way you think it does. It's not quite as easy as most people think, like, hey, just stop doing it, uh it doesn't work like that. So uh i- it's difficult to come into something where you're out of your element, um I think Andrea did a good job, I think Kevin Donalds did a good job. Um we're gonna have uh Manny Ramirez on Monday, I believe, or we'll get Ruth in here, um. I think Manny's gonna be here on Monday, so check it out, uh tomorrow, seven P M, we're trying to get Manny on there, uh. And and Ruth, Ruth Thurman's gonna come on as well, so that's all four candidates, uh it's not a targeted. Interview, I'm not trying to uh.
So, so just so everyone knows, uh Andrea um definitely is my sister-in-law, um. Anyone who knows her knows that I could not sway her to do anything. People think that, I mean, I'm not a B L M supporter and 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 she is and we disagree on lots of things, but I'll tell you that she does listen. Uh and she does, you know, formulate her opinions based on uh her morals and then based on uh what's going on and whatnot and so, you know. Full disclosure, that's why I was not even involved with, um you know, talking about uh. Her during her process that she did with you, um but I do think she did a great job, I also think Kevin did a great job, I was super happy to hear that. He would support the the future of cannabis revenue coming into town, um you don't have to be a cannabis supporter to support revenue. You know, the the idea that we continue building this so that we can continue having revenue and then he he had also had said, hey, looking at other things. You know, and so that's, that's, we need people that are gonna not only look at what we're doing, but also take that extra step. To, you know, and and I have not, uh the only person that I'm gonna say that that I am um. Endorsing uh is is my sister-in-law and the reason is, is that she would probably beat me up if I didn't. Beyond that, I'm not endorsing anybody uh this race, I think we have a lot of great candidates, a lot of great people. Um the, I think that uh, just like uh Atkinson said, uh the problem is. And and it's really not a problem, but people think that you can do all these different things. And, you know, I don't wanna pick or point on any one candidate's uh issues, um but I just, you know, wanna say that. If you want to put something into action, the best thing to do is to try and get uh the rest of the council to see your points. And to agree with you and to be ready to work uh together as a team, because at the end of the year, you only have so much money. Like, you know, for instance, let's talk about animal control, right? No one wanted to get rid of animal, the the animal control officer. But it was, it was a trade, right? It was, we didn't have the money to support everything that we had and we had an opportunity. In order to let, give me love, uh help and take over some of those drains, which I think has been working out really good.
Has been, especially for the cost, the the cost went down for the city dramatically, probably in the neighborhood of ninety thousand dollars. Um you also have to remember, give me love, the animal shelter only has a a a certain amount of space to put these animals. So once they fill up, I mean, wh- there's no space left, wh- we can't do anything unless we build another shelter. If we're gonna talk about building another shelter, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, plus we have to find uh some place to put it. And then we have to find employees to man it, so we're talking, we're, at that point, we're gonna be in the neighborhood of a million dollars and we just do not have the money for that right now. I'd love to be the good guy, I'd love to be the person who says, hey, I'm bringing animal control to Kalanga, I would love it, but.
Do you support, do you support hiring, i- if the city can afford to pay for it, would you support hiring an animal control officer?
Sure, I I would support it, but it, we would have to have a point for. Hiring an animal control officer, if we hire an animal control officer only to have a shelter with volunteers, that's already full anyway. What would be the point in hiring another animal control officer that's gonna cost us in the neighborhood of a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year? We have to, there has to be room in the animal shelter. In order to hire an animal control officer, right? We we can't have a full animal shelter run by volunteers and then hire. An animal control officer who doesn't have anywhere to put the animals, that that would be pointless, it'd be a waste of money, you're you're gonna have exactly what we have here, except we don't have any. We we've lost money out of it.
So, um I've heard from the community many times, um talking about, well, how come we didn't just keep the shelter that we had? Well, I can tell you that the shelter was in horrible shape, um we listened to the people that worked out there. Uh that said that they, there was a problem with the air conditioner, there was a problem with uh parts of the roof. Um it wasn't ADA compliant, which means you start doing things to it that are over.
That was the big thing.
Right, that's the big thing, right? And then, of course, the access road to get people to be able to go out there. You you, you had to be paved, you couldn't just put a regular road out there. So the city decided, I think it was six hundred thousand to sell it to Ocean Grown, it was gonna cost more than that to put up a fence and the road and fix all the rest of that stuff out there. Uh to to do that in in that area and so, you know, the the city chose, you know, to move it into town, save some money. Um I wanna point out that uh, when the S B C, S B C A came in. Uh it's on tape, anyone can go back and watch it, um specifically asked her, what would you do with a lot of the animals and she said, um I wouldn't be picking up a lot of them. She said the ones that are, that are on the ground and that are small and that are just loose, they'll find their way home, you know, as they do. She said, and um for the bigger ones, those are the ones you need to focus on, on the ones that are vicious. And whatnot like like that, but I know that just tears the people's hearts to think that you're gonna leave an animal outside. But from the S B C A, that that was her thing, she said, you know, they they will find their way home and please, if anyone finds my cat. Don't turn it in anywhere. Because it will find its home way home, it has been uh uh spayed, it has a tag on it, you know? So um but I think everyone's in the same boat that we want animal control, uh just gotta figure a way out to.
Yeah, it's difficult, it's it's a difficult decision, same goes with. Uh what's the other one, animal control and um code enforcement. We all want that too, but we also want a stable budget and we need to um get a stable budget before we start.
I think you're getting closer.
Our expenditures, we're we're a lot closer than we used to be, yeah.
It it wasn't a balance for a long time and now you guys have finally got to the balancing point, so. As long as when it comes down to budget talks that we don't let them make increases on other things without discussing these items, it should be something you guys can tackle.
Remember, every single year, we have lots of increases in CalPERS, we have it in disability insurance, I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars, so. Um we have that too. Yes, the city still would not respond to skunk calls or um. Skumps and um.
So the question is our our our, well, the statement is our neighborhoods are being overrun by feral cats. And dogs running loose and an overabundance of skunks, it would be good to have someone uh to be able to call to help us out and I definitely agree with you. I mean, it it is, it is a uh, it is a priority.
The the wild animals, the city won't respond to even if we had animal control and they won't respond to raccoons either, either if I'm not mistaken, I believe that would. I don't even know if anyone would respond to those, honestly, do you remember anybody ever responding to them when you were? I don't think they would, I think wild animals have their own special protections.
But that's something you guys could work on. I mean, you're gonna get a new council and. You know, the council dictates what the priorities are and so by choosing your council members, you're dictating those priorities, just realize that when you're. Putting priorities up, you're usually unfortunately taking away from other priorities, cause there's only a certain amount of cash, so. Um but I definitely agree with what you're saying, Rachel.
Alright, so let's talk about, we didn't talked about the museum yet, have we? Okay, so the Baker Museum's opening again, once again, uh right here in town, please uh go support it. On Saturday, well, yesterday was open eleven to five, it's gonna be going back to normal hours, Sunday it'll be open from one to five. Uh masks are gonna be required, temperatures will be taken at the door, please go out and support our local museum, it's a uh a jewel that we have in this town and. Something we should support, I really like it, it's a pretty cool place, if you've never been, you need to go, it's pretty cool. Oh, there we go, sees, it's illegal to trap or relocate skunks, so there's that too. Um anyways, uh let's talk about uh, Nathan put up a poll earlier, was it today or yesterday? On Halloween, uh let's talk about Halloween. Uh are we going to be having Halloween this year? Are we gonna be sending our kids out for trick or treating? Uh my answer is yes, I'm gonna send mine out if they wanna go, uh what what's the results of your poll?
So the poll results for the questions that I put out there on the citizens page are as follows. Um a hundred and fifty seven people and this is, I know the numbers could fluctuate a little bit, a hundred and fifty seven voted uh for normal Halloween with no masks required. Um that was the number one thing that that people voted on, uh the second was um eighty three votes trick or treating. With masks for kids and adults and then there was. With masks for kids and adults, and then there was five votes for trick-or-treating with masks for just the kids. And then there was five people that voted to cancel, um, trick-or-treating altogether, uh. What do you, what, what do you think, um?
I mean, over, uh, as you can tell from the poll overall, the overwhelming response is yes, we're still gonna have trick-or-treating, my own personal opinion is. Look, the kids have been through enough already over the last year, however long it's been, six, seven months, let them have a little bit of fun, let them have a little bit of normalcy. Let them go around trick-or-treating, kids are resilient when it comes to things like this, uh, I, I'm gonna let my kids go out, I'm gonna be outside. Uh, giving candy to trick-or-treaters, and I, I don't have a problem with it, if you, if you don't want to, then don't let your kids do it, but don't stop everyone else from doing it. Also, leave your lights on, that's another, another way to have people recognize that you are participating in trick-or-treating, leave your lights on. Um, that's really gonna stink if you have a really good setup outside your house and you need it to be dark, so maybe that might not work, but overall, for the most part, if you, if your light is on. That means you're gonna be participating and handing out candy.
And, uh, Mary Jones just chimed in and said the churches are having a joyride, uh, drive-through tricker, trick-or-treat at the churches, that's another, uh, great option. Similar to probably like truncheon retreats, so that's a good thing, um, myself, I will definitely be participating. Um. I think that, uh, I will be having whoever, um, whoever is giving out the candy will probably be wearing masks and gloves.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be for whether or not I believe that it's required, it's because I want people to feel safe when they come to my house. And so, um, you know, my personal opinion on, on a lot, I mean, I have like four different opinions, you know, if you have to. If you have to take care of, uh, uh, a group of people overall, you know, that includes citizens and elderly and sick people. That's one set of opinions, if you have to do just your family, that's a whole nother set, but then if you have people that are coming to your door. You know, then that's another set of people, and I want people to feel safe coming to my house, so I didn't vote on this poll, I just put it up there. Um, I'm gonna have, I don't know if, uh, if I can convince my kids to wear masks. I don't know if I can convince them to, uh, they may not go trick-or-treating, they may just dress up and, and, uh, and, uh. Then if they're giving out candy, I'm gonna tell them they have to wear, uh, masks and, and gloves.
And if that's what you wanna do, I mean, do it, but don't stop other people from doing what they wanna do either.
Right.
So if you got someone to, no one can decide better for you than you, so you decide for yourself and let other people decide for themselves. So, um, that's all we got this week.
Yeah.
Oh, you actually lasted hour and twelve minutes.
Yeah.
So I hope you are a little more educated in what you heard here today, a little more educated on things going on in the city, um. There are so many more things going on in the city than what we, what we touched with here, uh, we have a lot of stuff going on, unfortunately, COVID slowed a lot of it down. Uh, I'd love to talk about this every week, if, if that's what the people of Kalanga want, or once a month, uh, we'll see how many views we get.
Yeah, let us know.
It is a long time, an hour and fifteen minutes.
It is, and you can watch it later.
Yeah, these are things that directly affect you, so, uh, hopefully you'll enjoy it, hopefully you'll get something out of it, um.
And if you want us to talk about other things, let us know, put it, put, put something in the comments of, of things that you want, um, and, and, you know, we're. Like I said, we're talking about doing it every week or every month, and depending on how much times that we have, I mean, Adam's super busy. Uh, out there bounty hunting, out there doing things for the city, uh, at the same time, you know, I'm doing my work at the, at the library, and I have a wife that's a teacher, and. Let me tell you, this thing with the kids and, and the schooling, it's taking it out, I mean, it really is, I'm doing the best I can. To keep them up with grades and everything, and so that's taking a lot of my time, but we hope to be able to do this again next week or, or soon.
I'd love to do it again anytime soon, I would like to say that, I always thought I could be a teacher, but these last few months have definitely proved that I am not teacher material.
Right, thank you to all the teachers, let's put that out there.
Rachel, Rachel, you heard you were a great teacher.
Yes, the teachers, amazing, you guys, you know, I know that all of us are frustrated together.
Definitely not for me, I don't have the patience for it.
It's, and I really wanna give out a shout out to the teachers that also have kids in the school system. Cause not only do they have to come up with content, put it online, then they have to try and get their own kids to do the content and other, and then use their kids as testers. And so, um, thank you guys, thank you for the school district, thanks to Lori, uh, at the school district, um, we really appreciate you putting in all of your time. Thanks to, uh, the city manager, uh, Marissa, uh, Trejo for doing all you do to keep this city going, you know, she is working overtime, all the time. She's always responding to people's stuff.
Wait, I thought you were gonna be the city manager.
No, no, yeah. Yeah, let, let's quash that right now, there is no intention on me being, uh, city manager, there never was any intention that.
I was, I was ready to fire the city manager and hire you.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, right, no, mm-mm, I don't think I'd work for you guys.
Alright, y'all, I love you, have a good day, we'll see you next week or next month, take care, everybody.
Bye-bye.